Everyone, so whenever you're ready to start the meeting, I would say that you could go ahead and go.
All right, let's go ahead and get started then.
Thank you.
Ready to go ahead and start the recording?
I think we're live Clint, you can go ahead.
Yes.
All right. All right, thanks Megan. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the December 7th virtual meeting of the Washington County Planning Commission. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce our board members. We have with us this evening Jeremiah Waddell, Denny Reader, David Klein, BJ Gatz, Jeff Semler, and Randy Wagner, Clint Wiley. The first item on our agenda this evening are the minutes of the November 2nd 2020 Plan Commission regular meeting. Everyone get a copy of those minutes, and if so, are there any questions? Changes, recommendations? Hearing none, I need a motion.
This is Danny, a mega motion to approve.
Dave, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. Thank you. All right, under new business, the first item this evening are site plans. You have Taylor Farm LLC. Sorry, Taylor Farm, I, L, or is that one? Taylor Farm 1 LLC SP dash 20 dash 012. Proposed site plan for proposed location at 16220 Wright Road. Zoning is industrial general and residential transition, and the planner is Lisa Kelly. Good evening Lisa.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
We've got you.
Okay, good. As mentioned, presented here is a site plan for Taylor Farm LLC. The site is located along the north side of Wright Road between Elliott Parkway and Hopewell Road. Zoning is industrial general. You will see on the screen the site plan layout of the proposed use. The developer would like to construct a warehouse and office on a 53 acre parcel. The building is to be approximately 825,000 square feet in size and 46 feet in height. Access to the site will be from Wright Road. It is to be relocated further north from its now current location. So as you can see, the new portion of Wright Road, which is closest to the building, and you can see the old, or what is currently Wright Road, which connects with Hopewell Road further south of the site. This relocation will create an existing single family lot with, which has an existing house on it and another lot without development. And we have a plat in our office that shows this replat of the site. And I believe you have a copy of that plat in your agenda packet as well. The subject site will be serviced by public water and sewer. Hours of operation will be 24 hours per day, seven days a week, freight and delivery, seven to 10 trucks per day. Projected employees will be 42 persons in the office, 165 persons in the warehouse. Solid waste will be a roll-off trash compactor at the bay. Lighting is pole mounted and in the parking lot on the building. And parking provided will be 492 spaces. Now, 656 spaces are required. The developer was granted a variance by the Board of Appeals in July of this year for the reduction of parking spaces to the 492 that is shown on the site plan. And in your agenda packet, you have the AT case referenced. Signage is to be determined and will meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The developer is proposing to meet forest conservation requirements by retaining existing forest off-site. 106, 1.69 acre easement on Wright Road and a 34 acre easement near Honeyfield Road west of Green Castle Pike. All agencies have approved except for health need allocation matters. And forest conservation will then be able to sign off with their approval once Travis prevents, presents his presentation here tonight to you all about the forest conservation, and that will follow after I'm finished. I don't have anything else to add. Trevor Frederick is the consultant who is working on the site. He is also with us if you have any questions of him, and I'll be glad to answer anything if you have questions.
Right, thank you, Kelly. Are there any questions for members of the board?
Yeah, as a newbie, I'm going to ask a question.
Sure, go right, go right ahead.
I'm fine with everything, except my question is, egress to Elliott Parkway, and it's been a while since I've been on Wright Road, but I assume if it's not already, the railroad crossing will be brought up to standard?
Yeah, this is Trevor Frederick, that's correct. From the intersection of Elliott Parkway and Wright Road, we are widening the Wright Road from Elliott Parkway down to the railroad tracks. And from the railroad tracks heading east, it will be a brand-new road constructed there. Additionally, at the intersection of Elliott Parkway and Wright Road, that inside radius where the trucks are going to be entering Wright Road has been increased to accommodate the WB 67 tractor trailer movements coming onto Wright Road.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
All right, thank you Jeff. Anybody else? Any further questions? Joe, I've got a question for you. Do you want us to take these separately, or should we hear the forest conservation first before we, we bring the site plan to a vote?
Oh, I think you could do it all. I mean, you could listen to what Travis has to say and then do it all at one time.
Okay, why don't we do that then? Unless anyone has any objection. Well, we'll do that. Before we leave the, the site plan though, are there any, any other members that have any questions or concerns at all? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item, and then we'll consider both, both of these together. The next item under forest conservation is Taylor Farms 1 LLC, that's SP dash 20 dash 012. It's a request to establish offsite forest easement and request a variance to remove specimen trees for property at 16220 Wright Road, and the planner is Travis Allen. Good evening Travis.
Good evening, Travis Allen, comprehensive planner with planning and zoning. So you just heard most of the details of, of this site plan for the Taylor Farms, so I won't rehash anything that Lisa said to any great extent here. But regarding the forest conservation, we're kind of here to do a couple of different things in terms of your review of this project. As mentioned, one is to establish, a request to establish an offsite forest easement. And then especially the main thing is a request to seek a variance to remove seven specimen trees from the site. Specimen trees, just to remind you, are trees that are greater than 30 inches in diameter at breast height. So the, the site plan you just saw is going to disturb a total of 58 acres, which results in them having a 18.98 acre planting requirement that they have to meet. So the, the first part of it in relation to the offsite easement relates to that Forest Conservation Ordinance, Article 10, Preferred Sequence of Mitigation. So that describes the sequence of techniques for mitigating forest conservation, ranging from onsite planting retention all the way down to the payment in lieu of option being the least preferred. Of course, the intent is to preserve or create forest onsite or in the same watershed before moving elsewhere in the county. So if you're deviating from those upper level techniques in the sequence, justification is provided by a qualified professional, which is kind of what we're doing here. The offsite retention method proposing is a less preferred option, but still fairly high in the sequence. In relation to the variance that they're seeking, that's covered under Article 15 of the county's Forest Conservation Ordinance. Specimen trees are prioritized for retention under Article 8 of the ordinance, so therefore they have to seek a variance under Article 15. That Article 15 states that the planning commission may grant a variance where, owing to special features of the applicant's property or other circumstances, the standards or requirements of the ordinance would result in unwarranted hardship to the applicant. Granting the variance must also be consistent with the intent of the act, and the relief shouldn't adversely affect water quality. So again, the main things they're demonstrating there for this variance are the circumstances of hardship and any effect on water quality. So as a part of the request, you have a few different pieces of information related to the, the forest conservation requests. I sent you the memo which kind of summarized things. I also, I believe, provided a copy of the FSD, which shows the location of where these specimen trees are. We included a site plate, a page of the site plan, and of course you just saw what Lisa presented as well too, which shows the 58 acres that they're going to be clearing onsite. And then as a part of the forest conservation plan, you see the two different easements that they're looking to establish, which Megan has put up on the screen here in the previous two slides. Finally, you have two different justification letters related to the establishment of this easement and the removal of the specimen trees. Looking at these requests individually, in terms of their offsite easement request, that actually did change just slightly as a part of what was sent to me earlier today in terms of the easement layout. So you can see the, the slide that Megan has up right now. That was kind of the original idea is to create this 1.69 acre easement just immediately below what the new Wright Road will be. That, Megan, if you could go back to Lisa's slide actually for a second. You'll see now the new layout. The county has asked for a right-of-way to provide access for future development of this site. So you can see that easement is actually now bisected in two. So as a part of their approval of their deviation from the Article 10 sequence, essentially what they're asking for now is to utilize payment in lieu of to meet that area of easement that was displaced by this right-of-way. That'll be a total of one tenth of an acre that they're going to be paying in payment in lieu of as well too. So you have this onsite easement, you have a payment in lieu of option. And then in the slide that shows the offsite easement, couple ahead Megan, yeah, right there. Then they're also requesting to meet their remaining planting requirement, a little bit less than a mile from where the development site is. When you establish an offsite easement, you do have to provide two-to-one mitigation. So most of their planting requirement has been doubled in order to meet this almost 35 acre easement that they're looking to establish over there. So that all relates to their request to establish the offsite easement and use the payment in lieu of option. The second part of this again is for their request to remove specimen trees. As stated in their justification letters, the applicant has contended that the proposed development wouldn't be feasible without the removal of these trees. They state that the location of the trees and changes in topography would make their retention difficult. I don't have any clear information in that letter in order to evaluate what effect the removal of those trees would have on water quality. But I would note both the easement that's up on your screen now and the previous one that's, that's to be proposed to be established onsite would protect forest and the existing forest in the floodplain as well too. So there would be water quality benefits for that. So in some, what they're essentially requesting here again is to establish an offsite forest easement, do a payment in lieu of for the remaining one tenth of an acre, and remove seven specimen trees. So three different things that they're requesting of you to decide upon here tonight.
All right, well, thank you Travis. I appreciate that presentation. Any members with questions for Travis? No questions at all? I guess that means that we have no real issues with, with either the site plan or the forest conservation, and if that's the case, we would need, we would need some motions to get these approved.
Hey Clint, this is BJ. I'll make a motion to approve the site plan and to approve the forest easements and changes as presented.
This is Dave, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no opposition. Both, both motions are carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yep, thank you Lisa and, and Travis. Next this evening under, next this evening under other business, we have 16609 Shepherdstown Pike. Request for a change of use for property located at 1660 Shepherdstown, 16609 Shepherdstown Pike. Zoning is residential business, and the planner is Ashley Holloway. Good evening Ashley.
Good evening Clint, good evening commissioners. Again, Ashley Holloway, Director of Plan Review and Permitting. Today I'm before you for not necessarily a change of use, but adding additional uses to a property that's located in the rural business overlay. The address is 16609 Shepherdstown Pike. Previously, this property was a office for a engineering firm. The engineering firm moved and it's been vacant for a few months, and then now new owners are looking to move in. The new owners are wanting to put a office for a printing shop on the second floor, which again would be the same use as the previous use, so not to worry about that. But here comes the additional uses to the property. The owners wanted to make the first floor a nano brewing company, which you should have before you the explanation. First floor is going to be a brewing company, which is a restaurant use. And then there's that outbuilding that they want to make a commuter coffee house, which is basically like a drive-up building for coffee. So I don't think anybody would get out their car, it's just maybe just like a drive, miniature drive-through for a coffee house. And so because this property is located inside the rural business overlay, any change or additional uses added must become, must come before you for either to be designated as a minor change, which means that the applicant could just move forward, or it's a major change, which means that a public meeting will be held to let the nearby residents know what's going on, because you feel that the additional uses may disturb neighborhood and may change neighborhood, or just feel that this calls for a meeting. So you're not approving the uses. The uses are approved through the zoning ordinance, but again, you're just determining whether adding these additional uses is either a minor change or a major change. Okay, and I believe the owners of the lot, they want to speak more?
Yeah, this is Mark Severcheck, and I'm one of the purchasers with Jeff Pilot. And the, we, essentially, we're not making really any changes. The prior use of this property was originally built as Ferry Hill Restaurant. So it has been a restaurant in the past, and after that, it was a gathering place for the American Legion. And then it turned into the, the property for the engineering firm. The front way back when was a fuel filling station, and, and that little building is about 400 square feet. So what we're looking to do is improve the neighborhood and, and bring some things to light. We're not really making any changes whatsoever. We're just bringing some, some energy to the South County. And that's it.
All right, well, thank you for your input. I'll ask now for any members of the board if they have any, any questions for either Ashley or the petitioners, or any concerns or questions, comments?
This is Dave. So I'm fairly familiar with that. A long time ago, I lived in Sharpsburg. And given that that was an active bar and a restaurant at one time, and fairly active business, I don't see this as a major change in what's been there in the past. I don't have any problem with it. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Anybody else?
This is BJ. I'm extremely familiar with the property as well. I think breathing life back into that building and bringing it back online would be a good thing for the southern part of Washington County. You would see probably a pretty good draw from the Shepherdstown area as well across the river.
Yeah, I would think so. I, I, I know where this, this is located, and, and I think that you certainly would have a number of, of different opportunities to attract clientele from both the, the South County area as well as across the river nearby.
Danny, I'm fine with it. Minor change. I remember it was a restaurant also, just like Dave. Was there frequently?
So I think what we need then is, is a, a motion that would either designate this as a minor or a major change.
This is Danny, I'll make a motion as a minor change.
Jared Waddell, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, that's Randy. I recuse. I don't think I have to on this one, but I'm going to recuse it anyway.
Okay, all right. All right, I don't, I don't hear any opposition. We have a a vote that passes that with one recusal from Randy Wagner. All right, well, thank you. Next, under other business, we have an update of staff approvals, and Ashley is still at bat.
Good evening again, Ashley Holloway. Just very quickly, just want to go over the numbers with you for submissions to my office. As you can see from the report, there were four standard grading plans submitted in November. There were five inspection and maintenance agreements made. Two stoneware concept plans submitted, two site-specific grading plans. Only one site plan submitted. If you go further down, there were a few, not many, but a large numbers in what we have permits that were issued. There was an entrance permit. 19 of them. There were 15 grading permits and two utility permits, all in November. Okay. Are there any questions on submissions?
Sounds like you're staying busy.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are, yep. This is a good thing for the county.
Yeah, it is. I agree. I agree. Any questions for members of the board?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. All right, that was a pretty brief meeting. Anything, anyone else has before we adjourn?
Hey Clint, Jared Waddell?
Yes.
Yeah. I guess I wanted to mention something to everybody. As you guys know, I continue to, to struggle with where we're at on, on the situation with the, the solar and us not, not having any ability at the county level to, to regulate it. I guess I wanted to, to reach out and see if there's any way we could, we could reopen that conversation and maybe get a meeting scheduled to talk to Jill a little bit about it, but just wanted to see what you guys' thoughts were. As a landowner, I, I continue to get letters with interest for, for renting our land, so I'm sure they're going out all over the county, and most of these letters are from New York and New England, you know, who knows if, if they've ever even been in our county. It's likely just sitting behind a computer and, and scoping things out, so. I just wanted to bring it up. I have a landlord that is a personal friend to the governor. I discussed, you know, my, my thoughts on it and concerns with how, I guess it's the, is it the Utility Commission that kind of overruled us being able to regulate it at all?
Yeah, the, the Maryland Public Service Commission has almost 100% control over that. It doesn't mean that we don't have some, you know, some say in that process, and in fact, we have, we have a lot of say, but we don't have final say. And, and that's really, I mean, that's really what it boils down to, is we can, we can establish, you know, the zoning regulations, and we can, we can let the Public Service Commission know, you know, what our preferences are. You know, and, and, and we could participate in all of these cases as they come up on a case-by-case basis. But the final decision will be made by, you know, by the Maryland Public Service Commission. Typically, first it would be made by, you know, one of their, one of their judges, and then, you know, any appeals can go to the actual commission themselves. But you're hearing, I shouldn't say judge, hearing examiners, and then appeals go to the commission themselves. I'm pretty familiar with the Public Service Commission from my dealings in the, in the telecommunications realm. And so that's, that's the, that's pretty much the process. We can, we can participate in that. Both as, as individuals, we can, we can get, you know, neighbors and, and community members involved. And as, as a commission, we can also let them know, you know, how we feel, whether we have, especially if we have consensus that may, that may lend some, you know, some value and some weight. Kind of commissioners would also have that same ability to lend their weight to, you know, to, to any case. But at the end of the day, you know, that, that has been decided through the Maryland Supreme Court, you know, where that, not the Supreme Court, of course, Special Appeals, sorry. They have determined that the Maryland Public Service Commission is the, is the sole regulator for that.
So, is that something to take up with the state delegation in the Sen- in the Senate?
You know, BJ, that, that's interesting, because you, you could probably get some sort of legislative relief at some point. I don't know if they'd be willing to do that or not, you know. Because truthfully, it's going to benefit the, the Baltimore Montgomery County, you know, corridor to not have them there. And they probably care less whether they're out here.
Well, yeah, so, so your legislature, I don't know that they would take it on or get anywhere, quite frankly. Based on, you know, just, just my perception of the legislature itself and the structure of it, Jer. But, you know, maybe a conversation with Paul Quarterman and the delegation may be the place to go with it. Because if it's, if it's being dictated by the state, then that would be the place that you would probably have to turn to.
So on a county level, right now, we have nothing saying we're, you know, we've, we've kind of talked about feelings that it shouldn't, shouldn't be placed on class one or, one, two, or three soils. But we don't have anything saying that we are opposed to that or not opposed to that. The only thing we have is if it's in the priority preservation area or not. So my question is, why, why did we stop at the county level at, at least trying to put up some defense and saying, you know, if you want to put it here, you'll have to take it to the next level and overrule us, because this is how we feel in this county.
If I could wait you in a minute, I think Clint, Clint summed it up very nice, if you were listening to what Clint was saying. BJ has, has a good point possibly, but here's what happened on the last one, what the county could do. Now, what, what you're saying, Jeremiah, is, is a good point. Any ammunition we have, depends on how the commissions are standing, any ammunition we have, we can, it helps. As Clint said, we can, it helps. It, it, as Clint said, we, we got a lot of say, but the final, final end is with the PSC. And, uh, so in this last one, we wrote letters, we gathered all for information, submitted it, and they gave us the opportunity to put a designate in the meeting to, to, you know, to be called on or, or to speak on behalf. I think, I forget who it's probably Kirk for sure. And, uh, so we, we can, more ammunition we have, it helps. But again, the bottom line, unless there's something can happen, then I don't know about it. It's been determined to be the PSC.
Hey, this is Dave. Um, I was having conversations about this probably January, February timeframe before things changed with various other counties. And I know there are, there at least one county executive of the opinion in another county that there should be no solar arrays on any, um, green land. It should only be over top of buildings and parking lots. There should be no loss of, of green space to solar. I know Frederick County was looking at this very closely from the county, um, council, not the county executive. And they were considering county legislation to, I, I, I don't know if restrict is the right word, but to govern better um, where solar arrays would go. Um, I think the feeling was that they wouldn't be able to prevent it or stop it completely, but good legislation would be able to help guide the Public Service Commission. Um, lost track of that because of the pandemic, but I suggest maybe that, uh, staff would want to go check with the, uh, county council president and Frederick council to see, uh, what happened with that legislation and, uh, see if, if any parts of it might be, uh, applicable here in Washington County.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
We could, we could have a meeting and still talk and everybody's input. You know, at least we had all could think of a way or come up with something and have a plan, but everybody's input would be good. I'm like, Jer, we could, we could have a meeting and talk about it.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't trying to dissuade a meeting. I was just, uh, you know, starting the discussion with, you know, sort of the, the relevant facts. That's where we are, you know? Uh, I, I, I think that anything we can do to sort of set the table, uh, would, would help us in the future as we deal with these things. Cause we're going to continue to deal with them because truly land in, in Washington County is going to run a hell of a lot cheaper than it is in Howard County. And so, you know, this is where they're going to come, you know, they're going, but you know, you can't go to Garrett County. You're going to have too much cloud cover and so on and so forth. You know, this is going to be a really appealing location. And so, you know, and as, as we've talked about before and, and, you know, you just hit the, the nail on the head. You know, if we can, if we can kind of drive, if we could kind of drive development towards you already developed locations, you know, I've mentioned before, you know, it would be a, a, a great, uh, great thing to, to build up a, a solar array over, over large parking lots like, like at the mall, for example. It's already open space. You've already got, um, you know, uh, you, you're not going to have, you, you shade and, you know, trees and so on and so forth. You, you, you can, if you can drive, let it, let, let applicants know, let, let, let solar array in, and energy companies know that that's where we prefer to have this developed. You know, we can kind of try to guide them that direction and, and that would also then, uh, could be reflected as we deal with, with any cases that come before the Public Service Commission. So, hey, look, here's our document. Here's where we're asking them to, to go. Instead, they're choosing to maybe try to, uh, uh, use, use farmland and we're opposed to that. Uh, and, you know, that, that, we, we don't have the final say on that, but we can, we can try to drive the conversation.
Yeah, I'm just like Dave. I agree. Rooftops, we just approved the eight hundred thousand square foot warehouse. That's a perfect place to put them.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I can, I can, I cannot imagine, you know, a, a developer, especially a warehouse developer, uh, who wouldn't turn down and get another, you know, dollar a square foot or what have you and, and rent whatever it would be, you know, for, for that. Yeah, they may have to, you know, have some structural, uh, you know, uh, concessions for that, but truthfully, these, these arrays are, the, the science and technology changes are, are, are pretty phenomenal right now. They're getting lighter. They, 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 they don't need to be as large as they used to be. Uh, there's, there's quite a bit that can, um, you know, that, that can be achieved in a rooftop array.
Yeah, and panels are changing faster than cell phone technology. You're right, Clint. The K W output on a solar panel is phenomenal anymore per square foot.
Yeah, I, and, and so I, I agree. And, and I, you know, so again, I, I, Jeremiah, I hope you understand. I wasn't trying to sway the idea of having a meeting. I think that's actually a great idea. And I think we should be trying to push to, to have some sort of, uh, s- some sort of, I don't know, ordinance perhaps. I, I don't know if it could be an ordinance legally, but, but some sort of documentation that states this is what we prefer in Washington County.
Yeah, I think it, it, what it comes down to is from what I'm seeing and, and some of the, some of the areas that they've targeted even more than Washington County. I, I don't know. Maybe some of this is just farmer talk, but it seems like they're going to the path of least resistance. So if you're the county that has the least resistance, you're going to get the most solar. If you're the county that's the biggest pain in rear end and has the most hoops to jump through, you might not get solar as fast. That's just, that's just my opinion. And I, I bring it up again because I, I am trying to be the voice for the farmers of, of, of all the generations in this county, the, the ones that are that are finishing up their careers coming to me saying, hey, you're on the planning commission. Why is, you know, why, why are we losing our rental farm to, to solar and they can pay six times more per acre is what we could to rent. And I've got a son that doesn't know now whether he's going to keep farming here because he feels like he's got development on one side and he's got solar on the other side. So he can't compete with either. And, you know, the farmers of my generation are in this county are looking at that right now. It's not just that, that county, but it, it's definitely on the radar and it, it's a major concern. We can't compete unless it's regulated to where they, they can't put it on the prime soils. We're not even, we're not even in the same ballpark. So there's a whole lot of insecurity in the ag community, being those of us that actually want to stay here and continue farming based around this solar thing. And they keep asking me, what are you guys doing to try to, to limit it here? And right now I have to say nothing. So I, I don't want to have to keep telling them that, that, you know, I hope you guys can understand that. It kind of pulls at the heartstrings, to be honest.
This is Dave. I'm, I'm with you, Jeremiah. Um, I'm going to say this is my personal opinion, having seen these places now up close and personal in what it does to the land and what it does to the environment. Just from a conservation point of view, I am categorically opposed to any solar rays on any green space. I'm a, I'm throwing my hat in with the one county executive that I can think of. I see no true value, no true benefit to giving up green space to these monstrosities. And I see all sorts of problems with just other problems involved. And I know that people have property rights and so forth, but this is something I'm just adamantly opposed to at this point.
I'm in the exact same place as Dave is, obviously.
Well, it's, it's, it's not likely we can have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I'm Danny, I'm with you too, Jared, Dave. It's just crazy anymore. Got it now, hand.
So what we ought to do then is come up with some sort of plan of action and have it, have a, a meeting. It's unlikely we'll be able to have a, a face to face meeting anytime soon, but we could certainly set up a, a, you know, a Zoom meeting uh, with staff. If, uh, Jill, if you have an opportunity to, to reach out to Frederick County and find out what, uh, what they've done. You know, even if it's draft legislation, we'd certainly like to take a look at that and have that be part of something we could, um, you know, sink our teeth into here.
Clint, I just did. So I'll get back to Jill on that. I'm, I'm friends with the folks over there. So I'll, I'll let you know.
All right. Fantastic. That's perfect. Uh, and we could do something, I mean, depending on how, how quickly staff could be available, we could do something relatively soon. I don't see why we need to wait. You know, uh, you know, we've, we've been fortunate to have some fairly light agendas. There's no reason why we couldn't do something other later this month or, or, you know, even, you know, early next month. And, and you know, and kind of, you know, start kicking around some ideas. Uh, and then we can get something, you know, moved up to the, to the county commissioners, even if it's just simply our, an outline of, of our thoughts.
Hi, may I say something? This is Ashley Holloway.
Sure.
Hi, uh, if, if we do have a meeting, uh, how do you commissioners feel about inviting the Board of Zoning Appeal members? Uh, because, you know, anything under two megawatts is under county control, under county laws and ordinances. And so a lot of the times it goes before the Board of zoning appeals for approval for a special exception.
I think before we
You know, it would, it would come to that board first before it would come to the planning commission for site plan approval. So maybe if we invite them to the meetings just so they could hear everyone's point of view about it, you know, and see how they feel about.
That'd be great, Ash.
I'm, I'm just going out there. I don't know if that's possible in our, you know, legal indications of that, but just want to throw that out there.
Oh, there's no reason why we couldn't meet with them. Uh, there's no reason at all. I, I, my, my go ahead.
I think if you could have them in some sort of joint discussion, because it's, it's not like we can really make a motion or, um, have things carried that way. And Ashley brings a good point that it goes to the zoning board first. At least the zoning board going into it would know kind of where the planning commission stands on these situations. I think it's a good idea.
All right. Well, there you have it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you all feel that any, do you guys need to hear like any testimony from, from farmers and, and I don't know what the percentage is, but, um, a high percentage of the ag land in our county is owned by the Mennonite community. And I do work with a good many of them. And there, there's some of the ones coming to me saying, hey, you know, we don't, we don't really get involved, but what is going on here? We, we feel like the solar thing might run us out. So I don't, I don't know if you, if you want me to just, you know, talk on their behalf or invite them to a meeting, a representative or something?
I, I think, I think at this meeting, I think initially my, my vision of it would be, it would simply be uh, an administrative meeting without, without need of testimony. But Jeremiah, I think you can easily voice, uh, and, and represent that, that, um, the agricultural, uh, members of our community. But I also think just even from our discussion this evening, it sounds like you've already got the support of, of the members here. I think we all agree that this, this is, is, uh, you know, we, we all have the same concerns.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think, I don't, I haven't heard anybody here tonight state anything that would, would lead me to believe otherwise. And, and this, this, I think we have a great opportunity to, to try to, uh, at least, at least let the, uh, Public Service Commission know how we feel about, about this. And as you said, Jeremiah, I think if we can make, uh, you put, put something down in writing, uh, that, that is a policy, uh, that, that may give, even if we, we have a policy that we don't have final say or control over, it may give, you know, potential, uh, renters, you know, some, some pause.
Yeah, I agree. At least we could feel like we, we did something. We did everything we could.
Right.
Hey Clint.
Mm-hmm.
So this is Dave. I, I just heard back from Frederick County. They have not, um, completed that legislation again because of the pandemic, but they want to get back on it and, um, so I'll continue discussions with them, anybody else that wants to, and, uh, maybe we'll be able to, um, use some of their ideas, but, um, I certainly know that they not only want to preserve their agricultural ground, but their, um, hollowed ground areas up through the Route fifteen corridor. They have areas, uh, which would be similar to our Antietam area, but they, they have places that are, are, are very sensitive and, um, I think they're taking a pretty measured approach. So I, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up and get back with everybody with whatever I find out.
All right. Great. Thanks. I think, I think if they even have any sort of draft legislation or, or even, you know, outlines or notes that would be, that would
Yeah, I'll get the drafts as, as they're working on it and as, as they let me, and then we can, we can take a look at that and maybe give them some ideas as well as get ideas from them. So I, I think collaboration on this is, uh, is, is a great thing.
Absolutely. I agree.
And this is Jeff Somer. Um, I, at the risk of beating a dead horse, I'm, I'm on, on board with this. Uh, before I came on the commission, I wrote a weighed in with the Public Service Commission about the, the array near Sierra Falls. That's my zip code. Um, and one of my points has already been made by others is if you look at the building across from the, the airport, that's fourteen acres under roof. You could put a rail on, um, instead of using that ground, uh, right there near the traffic circle.
Absolutely. Yep. I think we're all, I think we're all singing from the same sheet of music on this. All right. Well, let's, uh, let's work to get something put together as quickly as possible in terms of getting a meeting. And, and I think, you know, if we can start, start work on this, I think that would be a, a, a great idea. Absolutely fantastic idea. All right. Anything else? All right. Just a reminder, we have an upcoming meeting, uh, January fourth and, uh, I don't know if we'll have an opportunity to meet on, on this, uh, solar array subject prior to that. If not, I want to wish everyone a, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you at the very beginning of 2021, which we hope will be a much better year than 2020 has been. Uh, although I, I, uh, 2020 hasn't been as awful as it could have been, I guess, but, um, certainly not as great as it could have been. So, um, I, I now I just needed a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?